I have some problems with it. Okay, first page. Maintain, cut or remove weeds, grass and/or any other non-cultivated plants. Grass is a cultivated plant. If it's on our front lawn. And who is going to cut down all the bamboo? Does Public Works do that? Or do we do that? I mean bamboo is wild in the city. It grows everywhere. It grows on city property, in our urban forest. And it is certainly not cultivated. And it exceeds a height of eight inches. Item C under Section 1. Eliminate, fill or remove holes, items retaining water, et cetera, et cetera. Does that mean birdbaths? Does that mean swimming pools? They retain water. Birdbaths retain water. Swimming pools certainly would attract a child. Might become a breeding -- a birdbath will become a breeding place for flies, mosquitoes, et cetera. I don't think -- I don't think this says what you mean. Okay, on Section 50406. Damaged dilapidated or casually damaged structures or properties are inside the boundaries of the historic district. That include the White -- the Ice House on Main Street is certainly is damaged. And it's a casualty, and it certainly is an eyesore. Do we tear it down? We have no provision for -- does this ordinance only apply to those parts of the city that are zoned residential? Does it also apply to commercial?
It would apply as written to the [inaudible].
Okay. Okay, well then we have no provision for abandoned commercial buildings up on the highway that are deteriorating like that restaurant there at the corner of 23 and 62? Or, okay, we have no provision for that. How long can they be vacant before we insist that somebody maintain them?
It's not a matter of being vacant, it's dilapidated.
Well, it's also abandoned.
It's not abandoned, it's for sale.
It's not in use.
That doesn't matter.
Okay, we don't make any provision for that in here. We don't make any provision for abandoned commercial properties.
If they're dilapidated, they fall under the provision.
Okay, nuisance. That which causes offense, annoyance or trouble. That statue in your front yard offends me. I don't like the looks of it. Patrick Brammer has statues in his front yard, and I don't like to look at them. I don't think they are appropriate to that. Is that what we're talking about? Unsightly, not pleasant to look at it or view. That's judgmental. Who decides whether something's unpleasant?
City Council.
I mean, there are a lot of people who think the Picasso sculpture in Chicago is unpleasant to look at, but it's considered a work of art. Junk, any undesired thing or substance. Okay, does that include hot water tanks that have been turned into planters? Does that include toilets that are used as planters on front lawns? You know, we've been through this before in this council. And one person's junk is another person's work of art. A tree with hanging bottles that might collect water in them, that could be a violation under this ordinance. I think this needs a lot of very careful reading.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask for a suggestion to council? That we take note, this is our first reading, our first look at it, we're late in the night, we've got a number of items on our agenda, that we note all of the discrepancies that we feel, and we bring them for the second reading.
Okay.
As opposed to getting any longer tonight.
I'm just running up a red flag here. I hope everybody takes us home and reads it thoroughly.
I agree with you, Mr. [inaudible].
Okay? Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
There's a motion to approve on the first reading.
Motion to approve the whole ordinance?
On the first reading.
Oh, on the first reading, okay.
And it was seconded.
Okay. Why don't you state that out loud for us?
Mr. DeBuda made a motion to approve ordinance 2201 on its first reading. Mr. Purgypile seconded.
Okay. Any other discussion about that? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
It'll be quick. I just want to know, can we make this pending future changes? Or do we just have to leave it like it is and know that we're going to do some changes?
You're only reading it for -- or approving it for its first reading. We've certainly made it all through the process.
Right. Well, I mean, I know that, but in view of everything, do we need to do some so that you look at it and help us change what needs to be changed?
That's what he's here for.
You need to decide what you think is appropriate for change.
Can we then also delay the second reading as we work on, like maybe a workshop or something?
No. I suppose if council wants to have a workshop, they can vote to have a workshop.
Well, it's just there's an awful lot that's -- maybe workshop would be easier. Okay.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, 5100, Ms. Snyder.
I make a motion that we schedule a workshop to go over this in great detail before the next meeting, hopefully.
Second?
I -- no, I second.
Was that a second?
Is that an agenda item?
What, to make it a workshop? I'm asking for a workshop date.
She's going to put this on a workshop. It doesn't have to be an agenda.
I'll second it, just to get the ball rolling.
Okay. We have a second, so it's on the agenda or scheduled for a workshop.
Hopefully before the next meeting.
It doesn't have to be before the next meeting. I don't have time.
Okay, all right. We'll need to vote on the workshop. All in favor say aye.
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 I heard three.
Aye, aye, aye.
Mr. McClung?
510?
Okay, let's try this again.
420. McClung and Mitchell, no.
Okay. All right, so it is what it is right now.
Okay.
Anything else to do with this? If not, we're moving on. All right. Number five has been removed. Number six postponed. Number seven, discussion collapsing parking lot by the auditorium. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Ms. Snyder.
Okay, we've got a resolution for both the parking lot and the courthouse in view of weather, medical situations and whatnot. Has this been given to Judge Barr?
Medical situations?
All of this means between sick and good weather.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
Has this been?
Yes, it has.
Okay, so Judge Barr has received this?
Yes.
Okay. Then. I'd verify that that's been done for the next year. Okay. The parking lot over on the auditorium side has had two spots blocked off for three to four years now because the underneath portion, and I'm talking way underground portion, is in the process of deteriorating and collapsing, and it's blocked off. So we don't have a visitor park there and have the whole thing drop down a zillion feet and get sued. Nothing, absolutely nothing has been done. The Quorum Court slash Judge Sam Barr has had discussions when this was first done, when we first blocked it off, because they refuse to take any steps to alleviate the situation. Now, our parking lot lease agreement, and this hasn't changed for years. Number four, maintenance slash use. The city agrees to maintain the parking lot in hard surface and good repair for use as a parking lot. The part that is deteriorating and falling in is not the hard parking lot. This is the part that the Quorum Court slash Judge Barr is supposed to be taking care of. Now, our annual rent, the city agrees to pay to the county rent in the sum of $23,000 annually. This has not been lessened by two parking spots. So even though it's been blocked off for the safety of our people and our visitors, we are still paying the county who is responsible. They are basically the landlord. They have not yet done their part as landlord to repair it. We are losing income, and yet we're still paying them for rent. Okay? That's in a nutshell for the parking lot. In a nutshell for the courthouse.
Point of discussion?
If I'm reading this correctly, it's discussion of the collapsing parking lot.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I was thinking at the time when I put it on there that it was the same lease agreement, so I didn't specify a separation.
Okay, well, to save time, just go ahead and let's talk about the parking lot. We deal with the next one on the next agenda.
Well, it's the same situation for both issues. We have a landlord who has refused to take care of their property while charging us rent. Something needs to be done. Whether we put our foot down, we meaning the mayor puts his foot down and says, fix it, or we leave. We do have a place we can go.
We're not leaving.
What I'm seeing is, they've got to fix it. They can either fix it, or we can vacate the property, or they can lessen our rent, whatever. They are responsible and reliable for this, and they are doing nothing because we are doing nothing.
You have a Quorum Court representative. Ms. Saylor, go ahead.
Okay, I want to know who has the liability insurance on that parking lot and how much is it? I would assume that the county is covered for personal liability. If that, any portion of that parking lot caves in with a van with kids in it, we're looking at several million dollars. Do we, does the county have insurance and do we have a copy of that insurance policy? And is it sufficient to cover any worst-case scenario if we get another sinking hole like we've had in the other parking lots? That's my question.
I'm assuming they have tort immunity, just like we do. Since they're a public entity.
Well, could we see the insurance policy? I mean, this needs investigation. We cannot be legally liable.
We're not legally liable. We don't own the parking lot, we merely lease it.
Okay, well, whoever has money eventually when it comes to suing, which is something, I don't know, Tim told me years ago, they go after whoever has the money. I am not sure that the county has done due diligence here. Do we have proof of their insurance? And do we know how much insurance they have to cover any liability here?
The chairman did not know that.
They probably do not have insurance, nor does the city. They will probably rely on their tort immunity, the same as the city would.
Well, boy, does that sound like a good idea to you?
Sound visitor-friendly?
Tort immunity is a right extended by the state to the entities of the state within the state to protect them from major loss.
I know, but we are aware of the problem and have been for many years. We've had an engineering study, and we know it's going to fall in.
Not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing. The state extends that as a right to its subcategory entities. And as long as it's there, it's used.
Well, it sure makes me uneasy. Okay.
Ms. Snyder.
State legislature could change it tomorrow.
I have -- yeah, definitely. I have a major problem with tort immunity and being visitor-friendly. You know, we've got it blocked off, we're losing income, our rent has not been lessened. If they want to lessen our rent and keep it properly blocked off so we don't have to worry about someone getting hurt, that's at least doing something. We have tried to get grants to repair this for Quorum Court, for the county. We have not been able to get one yet, but we keep trying. They are supposed to be trying, I have a feeling they're just ignoring it. But the point is, it's got to be dealt with. This is getting pathetic. They're responsible. Like I said, if they want to lower the rent, fine, they can lower the rent. We can keep it permanently blocked off so no one can sit there. I don't think it extends past those two spots, but I will not swear to that. Plus, that study was done, that engineering study was done several years ago. We need to ask the mayor to take action to sit down with the judge and/or the Quorum Court and demand action of some kind.
Mr. DeBuda.
Mr. DeBuda, go ahead.
We decided to block off those spots. If I'm the, if I'm the judge, I'm going to say, well, I think it's safe to park there, so go ahead and park there. It was the city's decision to block off those two spots. So I can't hold the county liable for a decision we made. So I, no offense, I think this is a non-issue. We're running late. I would respect the council to be aware that we need to move along. Tonight on these agenda items, we have a mayor back from recovery from surgery, who I'm sure just asked for us to be brief tonight. These items can be addressed at a later date.
Mr. Purgypile, it's your turn.
I'd like to make a motion to table this discussion until a later date.
Second.
Until the next meeting. Because my main issue here is I'd like to go back and look at that engineering report. I was down underneath there, and just to be brief about it, I'm not, I'm not real sure this wasn't initially sort of a knee-jerk reaction to just block off those two parking lots. I'd like to take a look at it and just give my opinion.
This time.
But I would like to table this at this time, if.
Just second.
Yeah, I seconded that.
But I still have a discussion hanging.
I know. Go ahead.
Just to make it real clear, we blocked it off because we're visitor-friendly. Just because the Quorum Court has chosen to not take action doesn't mean we should sit back, wait for someone's vehicle to fall in and/or them, have them die and say, well, screw you, we have tort immunity. I'm sorry, that is not how you regulate laws. So whether they've taken action or not, we took action, yes. We're losing income because we care. Quorum Court's going to have to learn to care.
Anybody else? All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Postpone. Move some number eight, discussion of water sewer rate increases. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Purgypile.
Mr. Mayor, we received a letter from Dwayne Allen, Public Works Director. In it, he, he has requested, the way he phrased it was, my projected revenue totals show a 4% water increase, a 9% sewer increase would allow us to complete some projects while maintaining a reserve. He does not specify that reserve. Having said that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask our finance director, if he could approach the mic and just give us a very brief.
I meant he could.
Discussion of this and how we need to satisfy our bond covenants.
Okay, our bond covenants say that we will have net revenue from water and wastewater of 120% of our annual principal and interest payments on the bonds. I, even though the audit has not been released yet, I, for 2012, requested the sheet, the worksheet that BKD prepares. And this is their note at the bottom. The city is not in compliance with this covenant. The rates were not adequate so that net revenues were greater than 120% of the aggregate average annual principal and interest requirements on all system bonds. The city has not obtained a waiver from the bond trustee. Noncompliance has been disclosed in the footnotes to the financial statements. Okay, we, our covenant says that we've had 120%. We were at 82%. This is the second year that this has occurred. And see, this, this audit report on the water/wastewater is submitted to, ultimately to the Securities and Exchange Commission. And so, last time, for 2011, we were not nearly as close or far behind as we are on this one. And I received calls from the SEC representative in Fort Worth. And our attorneys took care, they wrote a letter and said that we were, you know, it was just an unusual situation and so on and so forth. And they pretty much got us off the hook, so to speak, last time. This time, the issue, of course, hasn't come up yet. But here, as I understand, is the issue that if the council does not take action to correct this, then the SEC will come in and they will adjust the rates to correct this. And so, in my calculations, we would have to have, would have had to have for 2012, 6.5% more in revenue than we had. The percentage was not that great in 2011, and that's just covering the shortage. That's not any, that's not any excess. That's just to do anything, that's just to cover the shortage that we had.
So I guess, let's kind of wrap this up. So where do we need to go from here? What, what is the increase that we need?
Well, I think we're going to have to go to a great extent by Mr. Allen's numbers.
Okay.
Personally, to do any, we're going to have to correct this, but if we're going to do anything for reserves or infrastructure or any projects, we're going to have to have more than the 6.5 or 7%.
But we can start a step at a time.
Start a step at a time. And if there's not, you know, I think that if there's discussion here at council table that, about this, that will help eliminate the issues that the SEC will have. And so, at any rate, and of course, council has the authority to raise water rates without any public hearings or anything. It's my understanding that if you raise wastewater rates, you have to have a public hearing. And of course, the city code gives the finance director the authority to raise the rates at the Southern State Small City Consumer Price Index or a maximum of 3%. And I looked it up the other day, I believe if my reference was correct, that would be about for this year, I could raise it 1.9%.
Okay. Mr. McClung? Lonny, what, what is the current debt, bond debt that we have for water and sewer?
Well, the principal and interest payments are $244,824 annually. And the current debt is, on our series 2010, excuse me, principal and interest on the 2010 series is $1,772,690. This is as of December 31st, 2012.
That's wastewater? Or is that, is that an aggregate for wastewater and water?
I don't know for sure which, which is which. And then our series 2008 is $1,899,670. And of course, we've made payments in 2013, so it'd be somewhat less than that.
But we've got ballpark aggregate of $4 million out there.
Approximately, yes, sir.
What, what are these funds in here on this sheet that you sent out this afternoon? The 2008, 2010, 2012? The WS, I assume it's water and sewer bond CDs?
Um.
Do you need?
Yes, that's, that's certificates of deposit that we have. That was some excess funds that are invested, and some of those are held by the Bancorp South, that are managed by Bancorp South, which is the bond intermediary.
And but, but what are they, they're not earmarked for anything, they're?
It would have to be relative to what those bond issues were.
I mean, they're, I mean, I guess I don't understand. They're, are they, are they, are they there for, for payment on the bond, or?
No. No, we've been making bond payments out of, out of current revenue.
These, these are revenues, that unused revenues from these bonds?
Yes.
Is that what they are?
Yes.
Okay. Then up, up above that, there is the water and sewer depreciation?
Right.
And that looks like that's an account that has 350-plus thousand in it?
Right.
But what is that?
That's just a set aside that, for, for maintenance of the facilities as they depreciate and it's like you would a piece of machinery or whatever. See, depreciation is a, is a noncash, and you really should set aside the money to replace it, and that's what we're doing.
So is this, is this something that goes up and down through the year? That's, is that what it does, or is that?
Pretty much goes up. We, we pretty much add, try to add to it as we can.
So there are, there are some monies in there for repairs and things?
There are some monies in there, yes, sir.
This is something that's readily available?
That is, yes.
Okay. That was. Mr. Mitch?
So Lonny, that, those certificates that water heads, could those be used for infrastructure issues, those certificate deposits, are they available for?
They could be.
Thank you.
Ms. Saylor?
Okay, I'm kind of lost on the numbers here. You said last year we were 82% of what we needed to collect, and we're even further behind this year. So in order, I just need a bottom-line figure. In order to bring us up to 120% of the bond payment, how much do we need to increase our water and sewer rates? And as our software, now, we can do water separately from sewer, can't we? Use it just times two.
Yes, right.
But we can have a different rate for sewer now than we can for water.
That's correct.
Okay. To bring us up to in compliance of 120% of the bond issue, how much do we have to raise water and sewer?
Well, for 2012, it'd be the 6.5%. For 2013, I haven't, I don't have the numbers yet.
Okay, so we're looking at?
Probably.
10% or something?
Probably in the neighborhood of 10%.
Eight or 10%?
Yes.
Something like that? Okay, but we need to get to this pretty soon.
Needs to be addressed, yes.
Well, okay.
Mr. McClung? Is it an advantage or disadvantage to have those, those water and sewer bonds, excess revenues still in that account? I mean, do what?
They're.
I mean, we're paying interest on that money.
Well, yes.
Aren't we?
And I will have to check to be sure those, I said well ago that was available. There may be some reserve requirements in those bond issues, and they're about this thick, and I'm not absolutely certain that that's not what those are.
I would move at this time to allow Lonny to research this, to get us the information so that we can make an informed assessment of what percentages we need to raise. I might caution council that encumbering the business community with any more rates over and above what is necessary just to get us to that 20 and not addressing infrastructure, that needs to be a separate issue. I mean, we're taxed pretty hard in the business community, and water's a big portion of, because we're, a lot of hotels and a lot of restaurants in this community, that's, that's a big item for people. So at this time, I would just ask council to defer this to the next meeting.
Yeah, I would.
Set a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Mitch, you got a comment?
I absolutely agree. It's there, I don't think we obviously want, we just need a number that we can work on. And it would be nice if that number could be applied to the average water bill so we can actually see the impact of the numbers.
What, with our new software and everything, I think that we'll be able to get this number, do it at least quarterly throughout the year and see where we stand. I mean, it, the, of course, if we wait for the audit, it'll be this time next year before, you know, the outside auditors. So, and we haven't actually closed the books on 2013 yet, so. So, and we haven't actually closed the books on 2013 yet, so I will, my next council meeting, I'll try to have my numbers for you on this issue.
Very good.
Is that okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I guess we voted on that, didn't we?
Aye.
I don't think so.
I don't think we voted on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we're legal. I move this number nine, discussion of vehicles used as limos.
I'd move to postpone that till the next meeting.
Second.
Hey. Stole my thunder.
Does our problem still exist?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Postpone. All right, moves us into agenda setting, Mr. DeVito.
Nothing here.
Mr. McLemone?
No, it's not really an agenda item, I don't think. I'd spoken with you last year about the crosswalks, getting them repainted and adding one on Main Street there.
And we do have a response from the Highway Department that says they do not qualify for crosswalks.
Oh.
In that area. And we'll find that letter for you. We'll try to find it tomorrow. The Highway Department says it's not going to happen. In fact, we may have to take a, one up that is there now because we kind of jumped the gun a little bit and put in a crosswalk there.
You're kidding me. You got to be kidding me.
We'll find the letter, we have it somewhere.
Mr. Mayor?
Somewhere.
What street is that on?
Main Street.
Main Street?
Twenty.
Because it is the Highway Department?
State Highway Department, yes.
I see.
Yeah, we'll try to find it for you, so you can see it in writing. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Burke, your call.
Yes, I'd like to add an item, discussion of turning over the control of Black Bass Dam to Parks Department.
I'll second that.
Pardon me?
Do they know this yet?
They do now.
Discussion. I've mentioned it to, to Mr. Levine before in previous discussions.
Anything else?
Do you need a second on that? You got a second?
I think you did get one. Anything else?
Oh, devious.
Mr. Burke, Lonny?
I'm sorry, no, sir.
Mr. Snyder?
I'd like to add a discussion of the courthouse lease, and you can put it with the parking lot or right after each other, however, I mean, it works out properly.
Is there a?
A second?
Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Ms. Allen? Do you have anything?
No, I don't have it.
Okay. All right. Council comments, Mr. DeVito.
I'm ready for my close-up, Mr. DeMille. I'll put on my Indie Fest hat. I just want to thank Sandy Martin and Teresa DeVito and all the filmmakers and people from California and New York who came to Eureka Springs for the first annual Indie Festival. By all accounts, from the professionals, the filmmakers, people here visiting, everybody was just thrilled with the festival. On Saturday afternoon, we had between three and 350 people in the auditorium. I'll say that categorically, everybody said it was an unqualified success, and I thank all the people that were involved, all the volunteers that donated their time to the effort. I know it's a big deal to put on a festival, especially the first time, and I, I just think you all hit it out of the park, and I'm really proud of what everybody did, and the city's really proud of how it turned out.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McLemone?
I have nothing.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, briefly. Just an update from the Noise Committee that has been feeding. A special thanks to Al Frost Sergeant that has brought a tremendous amount of knowledge and support to it. Fatima Tour, Mark Hughes, myself, Chris Spieghendrich, the attorney Steve Beecham, Mike Bishop. I would like to point out that Noise Committee is in no way, nor should it be, anybody be concerned that this is going to be turning into like an motor coach fiasco that is absolutely not. So anybody that is out there preempting discussion that's taking place in the committee with their own personal agenda that this is an attack on motorcycles, any particular segment of the tourist population of the city are very misguided and misinformed. That is not the case at all. Please allow this, this group of people to get together, the ordinance, take a look at enforcement, and the most important component is that of communication. We will be soon getting a full update on that to the council, but at this time, those that have their own agendas about target audiences are very misinformed, and we would appreciate it very much if you would back off now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Burke?
Nothing.
Mr. Snyder?
Just wanted to say the polar plunge last Saturday was a huge success. My dog, Rumble, plunged twice this time, both the chief at least and the winner of the individual outfit, Miss Tutu. I can't wait for the pictures to come out, she was awesome. He plunged twice and now has his own shirt. I'm wearing mine underneath the yellow. It was really, really, really good. And out of this whole winter so far, it was the only nice weekend. So I'm very thankful for that. Now, the water, of course, is probably like 34 degrees, but outside it was nice. I hope to see more of you next year, including the council. Of course, I said that last year.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
No, I don't have anything.
I just have one or two. First, I'd like to thank Sandy Martin and Teresa DeVito for organizing the Indie Film Festival, just repeating what James says, but apparently it turned out to be a very, very good thing for the community and hopefully next year it'll grow. For those that have the opportunity to stand outside and freeze with us when we did the official opening of the restrooms, invite the public, go down and look at your newest public facility that will be open 24/7. It's a great addition to city of and especially the North Main area. Please treat it nice, because it's your money that built it, so.
It's heated.
It is, it is heated. It's, it's all automatic except for a few of the accoutrements, which you'll have to take care of yourself.
And unisex.
Huh?
And unisex.
Yes. I'm ready to go home.
What's that, Darren?
Is a second to that?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye. We're out of here.
I still want to talk. She ain't been in the door.